Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. The council meeting is being held at Town Hall on Tuesday evening, October the 6th, 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town's YouTube channel. I'm Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the Town of Lexington. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Law.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Carnes to give our invocation for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we pause in front of you today and we just want to recognize your goodness, your grace towards us, your mercy towards us. Mercy is undeserved, but we're very grateful for it. And we do acknowledge that the prosperity of our town, the goodness of our town, safety of our town, the camaraderie, all the good things we have, those come from you as you show us grace and put us in the company of others who are seeking the good of the city. So tonight, we'll seek the good of our town. We will try to bring wisdom and equity and prosperity to all citizens, and we'll need your wisdom for that. So thanks for all you've done for us, and we ask for your continued favor on everything we put our hands to, and we ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
And at this time, I would like to invite Philip Elliott, a U.S. Air Force veteran, in American Legion Post Number Six, ride director and vice commander to come up and lead us in the pledge. And also, Philip happens to be one of my neighbors, and I met him when we were dealing with Ripple.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Philip, will you tell us a little bit about your service?
I'm the United States Air Force. Travis Air Force, I was an air cargo loadmaster. I traveled from California, where I was based out of, to the east. Just enjoy it. I followed my father's footsteps. He was United States Air Force as well.
Well, we appreciate your service to our country. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I will now call the council meeting to order. Are there any deletions from tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Council met in executive session prior to this meeting. Matters discussed in executive session, discussion as permitted by South Carolina Code 30-4-70A, two routine personnel matters, discussion regarding West Columbia water litigation, and legal advice regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear a second? Second. Councilman Michael, second set. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Now on to approval of our minutes. Attach the minutes from work session on August 18th, 2025, and the regular council meeting September the 2nd, 2025. Are there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Carnes makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Smith, second set. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and they are approved. Next is our vision plan update. Following council's recent vision planning workshop, a vision plan advisory committee is being established. It will consist of 10 citizens, which will be appointed by town council. To serve on this committee, you must either live or have a business in town. This group will be responsible for studying, collecting input, and considering matters related to the implementation of the town's next vision plan. After tonight's final reading, a form will be available on the town's website if you would like to apply to serve. For a complete list of all the vision plan projects, go to lexsc.gov. Now we will move into our traffic update from our mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Roadwork continues on East Butler Street sidewalk and drainage improvements. Expect intermittent road closures over the coming weeks. Also, tonight, beginning at 9:00 p.m., a lane closure can be expected near the 100 block of North Church Street. Utilities Department will be repairing a water leak. Finally, on Tuesday night, October the 7th, beginning at 9:00 p.m., a lane closure can be expected at the intersection of South Lake Drive and Industrial Drive. A utility company will be repairing a cable located in the underground vault. Please exercise caution when traveling in the construction areas. We encourage you to follow the Town of Lexington's Police Department social media outlets for traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that needs immediate repair.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we will move to our first presentation, and Ms. Gracie, can you come forward? A proclamation of the mayor and town council honoring Gracie Bowers Crown Royal Miss South Carolina, whereas Gracie Bowers was recently crowned Royal Miss South Carolina and overall role model, honoring her leadership and dedication to service. And whereas Gracie has devoted countless hours to supporting the special needs community, foster children, and patients at Palmetto Health Children's Hospital. And whereas through her organization KIDS, Kind Individuals Doing Service, she has mentored hundreds of young people promoting compassion, purpose, and community involvement. And whereas Gracie is an eight-time recipient of the Presidential Service Award, reflecting her outstanding volunteer efforts locally and globally. And whereas she contributed to the revitalization of the Virginia Hilton Park, enhancing its value to families and residents throughout Lexington. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington do hereby recognize and commend Gracie Bowers for her exceptional achievements and her inspiring dedication to service, leadership, and community. Presented on the sixth day of October, 2025. This one is very special to me because I got to serve with her on that committee, and she went out into the schools, she went out to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts groups, and she did a lot of work finding out what the community wanted for that park. She attended our meetings. She was faithful all the time while still doing her other work for her children in the community. So, Gracie, I'm very honored to come down and present this to you and very proud of you. Thank you. Gracie, you want to tell them, what year was it you started with us on the Jenny Hooked apartment, Ashes and Oak?
I can't remember what year it is, but I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mayor Livingston, for giving me the opportunities to serve our community, because without you I wouldn't be where I am today, and I wouldn't have been on that committee. So thank you for that, and you've done a great job with our town, and I look forward to serving more in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, our presentation is recognition of Matt O'Hara and Leslie Gandy for their support of the Coffee with the Cop. Chief, uh, Matt Davis, Assistant Chief.
Thank you.
Please, please. Yes. Come up and stand with Matt.
Please, yep. Thank you. Ms. Mary, thank you for your time tonight. On behalf of Chief Green, we'd like to recognize two of our partners for the police department. Not only have we built a partnership, but we have friendship with these two standing beside me. In the fall of 2021, O'Hara's Cafe opened, and knowing Matt already, we were quick to form a lasting partnership and friendship in regards to our Coffee with the Cop, Citizens Academy, National Night Out, LPD Foundation Fall Festival, and many, many other events. The past three years, the police department has held our Coffee with the Cop events at the market, at the Ice House. And Matt and Leslie, yes, ma'am, have been an outstanding partner, again, providing hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of coffee cups and hundreds and hundreds cups of coffee for not only our police officers, but many, many, many citizens. And also the pastries. They've provided plenty of pastries, and I think that's really why a lot of people come by to see us. But they do come by, and that's what we want. We want to engage with them, and so we get to answer their questions. We get to tell them about our organization. We get to tell them about the VIPs. They want to know about that. So to be honest with you, we are a success with Coffee with the Cop because of the two standing beside me. We just want to take a minute, again, to thank these individuals, Matt and Leslie, for what they've done for our police department and for our organization. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
The pictures we saw on social media looked like our law enforcement was having a great time interacting with customers around Lexington. (laughter) No, we can't do that.
No, 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 no.
We will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Speakers are limited. The three minutes and a timer will be set. Would anyone like to speak to the regarding? Speak regarding final reading of annexation of Lexington County tax map 005421-01-005-006, located at 500 and 504 South Lake Drive. Final reading of annexation of a portion of Lexington County tax map 005497-02-001, located in the 5300 block of Augusta Road. Final reading of an ordinance establishing the Vision Plan Advisory Committee. Final reading of an ordinance for the 2026 budget adjustment. Final reading of easement across town property, Comporium Incorporated. Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Moving on to old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Carnes.
Sorry. Catching up. Final reading, annexation of Lexington County tax map 054210105. New Bethel AME Church owns approximately 3.22 acres on South Lake Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. A church is currently located on the site, and a portion of the property is already within the town's jurisdiction. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial and are within the downtown overlay district. South Lake Drive is classified as a collector road. The property is shown on the future land use map as the triangle downtown overlay area. The comprehensive land use plan describes this area as a unique part of the town characterized by a collection of historical residential and commercial buildings, as well as a well-defined town center with a high presence of civic buildings and public spaces. The Planning Commission recommended annexation with general commercial zoning at their August meeting. The property also needs to be designated as part of the downtown overlay district. Madam Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilman Carnes makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mayor, I do want to point out, we met with the church, and they pointed out, someone in the group said that the wooden house that is out by the road was actually the original Burlington Coat Factory manufacturing plant. So I'd love for us to figure out the history there of that building. They said it was, it did some different manufacturing during different times. So something we ought to try to preserve.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Final reading of an annexation of a portion of Lexington County tax map, located in the 5300 block of Augusta Road. Councilmember Law.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Drayton Parker Companies LLC is a Georgia limited liability company, according to the South Carolina Secretary of State's website, and they own just under three acres on the corner of Augusta Road at Cedar Crest Drive. And this LLC has petitioned to annex the property. A convenience store is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial and high-density residential. Augusta Road is an arterial road as its classification. Cedar Crest is also classified as a collector road. Our Planning Commission reviewed the annexation petition and request during their February meeting earlier this year, and they recommended an annexation of general commercial zoning. Madam Mayor, I would make a motion for final reading approval of this parcel's annexation request.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Councilmember Law makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second set. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Next item of old business is from Councilmember Smith. Final reading of the ordinance establishing the Vision Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you all heard, a vision plan advisory committee is being formed to guide the update of the town's vision plan and to ensure community input. I'd like to underscore the community input portion of that. So this committee will then be involved in the process of providing recommendations to council from that community input. The ordinance that we are considering includes changes presented at the September 2025 council meeting, and it was attached in the council packet for final approval. With that, Madam Mayor, I move for final reading approval.
Councilmember Smith makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Michael, second set. Is there any discussion? Ms. Cleaton, you said that the application will be up this week sometime? Okay. All right. Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Next item of old business is from Mayor Protem Williams. Final reading of an ordinance for 2026 budget adjustment.
Thank you, Mayor. After the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget and the July leadership and vision planning work session, budget adjustments and updates have been identified. Accordingly, the adjustments are outlined below. Item number one, barrier purchase of the Meridian Archer Vehicle Barrier System for Public Safety during events. The system costs approximately $141,000 is to be defunded by the fiscal year 2025 surplus funds. Under Parks and Community Services Department, we will update three positions due to reorganizations. These changes will not result in any additional appropriations. Item three, we will authorize $8,500 from the Vision Plan Fund for signed ordinance consultant services. Item four, authorize adjusting to 2026 enterprise capital budget to substitute the water line replacement project scheduled for fiscal year 2027 for the North Church Street water line relocation in the fiscal year 2026 budget with additional reserve capital contribution fee appropriation. Item five, the enterprise fund capital equipment schedule inadvertently does not match the schedule presented at the budget work session. This technical correction, including related updates to linked schedules, will correct the drafting error. I make a motion for final reading approval to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Carnes, second set. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our last item of old business is from Councilmember Allen. Final reading of easement across town property.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As presented at the September meeting, Comporium Incorporated has requested an easement across town property to allow for installation of service lines and will encompass the existing communications infrastructure. The easement is to be located on the Heights Water Tank Parcel and will include an area of 650 square feet. Under state law, conveyance of an interest in real property must be done by ordinance. A copy is provided in the meeting packet. Madam Mayor, I move for final reading approval of this ordinance.
Councilman Allen makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Protem Williams, second set. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Moving on to new business. Our first item is first reading of Corley Street Park deed, quick claim. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two parcels of land that make up Corley Street Park. The parking lot and recreational amenities are located on the parcel designated to the Lexington Cemetery trustees. The town council is the trustee of this parcel. For Corley Street Park to be eligible for grants such as the Land and Water Conservation Fund, the property must be owned outright by the applicant to be eligible for grant assistance. A quick claim deed is needed to transfer the property under the town of Lexington. A copy of the deed is attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilman Carnes makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Smith, second set. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Moving on to number two is approval of application for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The town has received an application from Mr. Brian Maddox, a resident of Lexington, expressing his interest in serving on the town's Board of Zoning Appeals. At present, the board has two vacancies for resident members. Mr. Maddox currently serves on the town's traffic committee and brings relevant experience to this appointment. His application was previously presented to council for review and consideration during the September work session. The application was attached to council's packet for formal approval of Mr. Maddox's appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. With that, I move for approval of Mr. Maddox to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Councilman Smith makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Carnes, second set. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our last item is approval of intergovernment agreement, IGA development review and permitting. Councilmember Michaels.
Thank you, Mayor. The Town of Lexington and Lexington County frequently encounter new or expanding residential and commercial developments on properties contiguous to the town that may require annexation. Historically, county staff have referred property owners to the town to initiate the annexation process. The attached intergovernment agreement provided by the county formalizes this longstanding practice and establishes clear, consistent coordination between the town and county moving forward. Today, I make a motion to table this agreement until staff can review this and negotiate the current wording in this agreement.
So you're making a motion that we table this and let staff work on some of the wording?
Some of the wording of the agreement. Make a few changes.
Do I need a second for that, David? To table it? Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Councilman Law, second set. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. So it is tabled. Are there any comments from the public regarding a specific agenda item for tonight? Any questions from the news media right now? Are there any questions or comments from staff? And I think we have a special from Randy Edwards. Some great news coming forward. We're excited.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to announce that the 2025 pavement preservation maintenance program has begun. And with that, Michael, if you'll, we have on our website, we've provided in the bottom right-hand corner there, a 2025 pavement rehabilitation project button. And when you click this button, you're directed to a map that looks something like this, which identifies the purpose of the project, as well as, as you scroll down in the actual website, you'll see that there's a listing of the locations where work will be occurring. And this will be updated regularly as we get better information from our contractor. And so each location is identified, and then when you zoom in on a particular neighborhood, it identifies which roads inside the neighborhood are in fact subject to the work. We are also adding communications through both contacting the HOAs via email, as well as providing door hangers for all of the residents that are on those affected roadways.
That starts tomorrow?
And we begin officially, we started a couple of weeks ago with some concrete curb replacement, but in earnest, we're beginning tomorrow morning with the mobilizing of the paving equipment into Lexington Heights, which is our first neighborhood on the list.
This is very exciting. Thank you for being so efficient in moving this forward, and thank you, staff, all that worked on putting this plan together. Anybody else?
Yeah, Randy. Obviously, the word's out already because I've got a message today before lunchtime. They're asking, they're saying the driveway is new. Is there anything they can put down to protect the driveway? And I don't know that they would need that, but maybe you could explain?
Yeah, we should not be in or on residential driveways behind the curb and gutter locations. So we should be staged 100% in the roadway itself.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Randy, how will the residents handle their garbage collection? Will they need to not put it on the street at that time? Or how, would that be a notice?
It's a great question. And I will have to actually come up with an answer for that.
Thank you.
And coordinate how that'll work. Okay?
That's a good question, Jenny.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I just take a moment to say first, just to recap for those watching or those that are here, initially, this came to us, if I remember, earlier this year, and you brought an initial proposal of around $900,000 or so to begin this project. But council, in hearing from many citizens in the town, and also you and your team and our staff, we actually increased the scope of this project by more than four times, and it's now a nearly $4 million project, reaching about 30% of the town roads. And I'll specify by saying the roads that the Town of Lexington owns inside of our town boundaries. So I just want the citizens to know that when you reach out to us, I personally had a resident reach out to me from Coventry and said, hey, I see that you are considering doing some resurfacing in the town. Why aren't our roads included? And that right there triggered the conversation from me to go and talk with Randy, talk with the mayor, talk with Rachel, and it began other conversations. Other members had been receiving feedback as well, and we took it from a $900,000 scope to a nearly $4 million investment in town roads. I'd also like to give you kudos that you're beginning to plan for a maintenance plan moving forward, and I know there's been no official allocations for that, but you're beginning to think about that as not, how do we not do this every 10 years or so, but how do we do this gradually? So thank you for that. And lastly, I'd just like to say that Randy and Rachel and the mayor and I had a chance to sit down today and review, how are we telling citizens about this ongoing work? Randy made a great point that when, naturally, when you do roadwork, you interrupt or delay transportation sometimes because you are literally resurfacing a road. So I would just like to state in the public meeting as well, please pay attention to the town's communications, the door hangers that you're willing to get, the website online. What am I forgetting? What am I forgetting? We just went through this, all the communications that you get from the town, please pay attention to that so that there are no boats or cars or, you know, maybe children's bikes, whatever, left in the road so that we don't have to, you know, remove those items for you as it gets close to doing that work. So thank you to your staff, if you want to specify maybe those communications means one more time.
The only thing that, we will have a variable message board at the entrance of, the primary entrance of a specific neighborhood, could be a sole entrance, but that will be out there saving, saying, stating that paving will begin on or about, you know, a specific date, typically, you know, a weekend or a week in advance.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your work on it.
And I would like to thank the council for tripling that money, or taking it up and doing more roads than we did. So I'd like to thank you all for stepping up and looking out after our citizens. I appreciate you all, and I appreciate everything you all do, working for the community. And Rachel is going to now recognize our new employees for September, and we have quite a few. We have six.
We do, thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to take the moment to recognize and welcome everyone. We were busy in September onboarding our new employees. We have Stephanie Hildebrandt in our Finance Department, Donovan Medley in our Parks and Community Services Department, Nicholas Giamarela in Utilities, Lane Johnson in Utilities, Dylan Parker in Utilities, and Terry Seuss in Utilities. We're excited to have them join our team.
Welcome to the town of Lexington. Also, somebody had a birthday on September the 28th. That would be you, Councilman Carnes. Happy birthday to you.
Guilty as charged.
But we hope you had a great day, and it's...
Alabama won that day.
It was, it was super.
And he got to hang out with his grandbaby. So he was good. He was all good. It's exciting time and beautiful weather around Lexington. It's cool, little cooler, everybody's ready for their coffee and their pumpkin spice and all those things for the fall. There are many upcoming events happening throughout October, so we encourage everyone to stay connected. Our last reading in the park with the mayor will be October the 21st, and the staff has done a great job. We're going to have blowie, we're going to have the Chick-fil-A cow, some chicken minis, some other treats. I think some things from Brian at Cowboy's baking something for the children. You can dress in your costume, just all kinds of great things. But the big thing is, we are partnering with the Lexington Garden Club, and they are bringing pumpkins and all the stuff to decorate the pumpkins for the kids. So come out that day and enjoy that morning. It's the 21st at 10:30 in the morning at the Isaiah Amphitheater in Virginia Hilton Park. And we also will have the library there, and I'm forgetting somebody's. I think I might be forgetting somebody, but not intentionally, but come out and you'll have a surprise when you get there. And I think we're going to have coffee for the moms, too. So it'll be a big morning, so come out and join us that day. Keep an eye at www.lexsc.gov or by following us on our social media platforms. Do any of y'all have anything else? That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching, we are adjourned.